You're on mute, Debra.
Yes, I just realized, thank you. The 5:00 workshop for the Select Board to discuss budget?
Yes, so you should have received an email from Megan with the Budget Committee's recommendations or consensus votes, I'll say. Basically, they agreed with everything that the board had done at your previous workshop. Didn't make any changes, didn't make any suggested increases, decreases. They did, in the letter, you see that, you'll see that they did have a... The two areas that they spent the most time on were the Harbor budget and the Opera House budget. And the recommendation, the one recommendation they came forward to with was not really a budgetary concern per se for this budget, but is one that they would like fees at the Harbor to be reviewed, which they are annually by the Harbor Committee, but they would like them to be reviewed, particularly the mooring fees and the launching fees, because they would like to see increased revenue from those two areas. Now, obviously, that's a policy decision, and they recognize that, but they did want to go on recorders as asking that those be reviewed by the Harbor Committee and the Select Board, and that certainly is up to the Select Board to direct the Harbor Committee to do that if you so choose. They also talked at length about the Opera House budget, and the general discussion was around the fact that they still love to see an endowment or some fundraising arm of the Opera House be developed, similar to like the Friends of the Library or something along those lines, to help with the capital costs of the building. But that wasn't a formal recommendation, just the Harbor fees was the formal recommendation. So the Select Board tonight, at your... You can discuss any potential changes that you'd like to make to the budget now, if there are any further ones, or you can... If there aren't any changes, then you'll act on the budget in the different topical areas by making a recommendation that will appear on the town meeting warrant.
At the regular agenda, or at the regular Select Board meeting?
Yes, yes, sorry.
And in... Just let me ask, and aside, when we do do that, do we have to... I know that you provided the example of how we make our motions and so forth, but what about for the articles, what is it, 34 to whatever there at the end? Do we have to go through those individually and read them?
There is no, there's no, no recommendation from the Select Board on those business articles. It's just on the budget articles. You would recommend a certain amount for the budget articles. And then when you, on your April 12th meeting, you'll review the whole agenda and approve the whole, the warrant, sorry, the whole warrant, and approve that in its entirety, or take articles off and then approve it or whatnot.
Does anybody have any questions or comments they want to make? Mark?
Bill, have you, you know, in the past couple of weeks, I know, I think you said we're around 13,000 under, including using our UFB money. Are there any other places you have become aware of or have talked to department heads about that, you know, they might be able to alter some of their numbers? Or is there anything else that you've got that you could feel comfortable lowering by a little bit?
No, not lowering. I mean, we are, we are just over $13,000 under LD1. The overall net budget is a little bit more than $10,000 more than the current year, which is a very, very small amount. If there was anything, the only thing that I'm a little concerned with is the EMS regionalization study effort with, you know, we did reduce, the board reduced that amount based on my recommendation in the administration budget from, I think it was 10,000 down to 6,000 or something like that. Knowing that Lincolnville hasn't put any money into the effort and knowing that Hope is, I know we're on live stream, but their town government is really in disarray at this point because of recall petitions and resigning Select Board members and the like. So the likelihood of either of those communities participating in an EMS regionalization study, even those that they support that, is pretty slim. So going forward, I don't know what that means. Does that mean that Camden and Rockport are the only two that fund that part of, part of the study, which we did with this first part? I would hope not. I have put feelers out there to Penn Bay Medical Center to see if they would participate in that study, and if that's the case, then we should be okay with the money that we have allocated. If not, then we have, you know, a little bit of contingency within the administration budget that we could use to help offset that. That's the only area that I'm, that I'm really concerned with. I don't really see any other places that we could reduce the budget. The board's gone through and, and reduced it significantly as it is, and increased, obviously, the use of unassigned fund balance and the school repayment as well.
Do you have confirmation on that $7,500 grant extension for broadband?
I don't have confirmation 100%, but yes, pretty much. When I, when I explained it today, I finally was able to reach out to the main community foundation and tried to explain the, the effort that's ongoing now, and they're certainly intrigued, and I think will support that through at least the end of the year, of the calendar year.
Just for the board and for those watching, remember we had $7,500 in the budget last year that were, we, there was matching grant to a $7,500 grant that we had gotten, and I wanted, we were preserving that $7,500 because we did the responsible thing by not spending it, you know, before we were ready, and I wanted to make sure that we secured the $7,500 grant that otherwise would have run out. So I've been behind the scenes urging Bill to make sure that that $7,500 grant is still preserved.
So I'm 99.9% certain that, that'll get extended through the end of this calendar year, and I'll probably have confirmation tomorrow. So I'm, I'm very solidly comfortable that that's going to be preserved.
Okay.
And I'm not sure why Jeff, Jeff was here and then he left, so.
Oh, yeah, I wondered whether he was.
Yeah.
Because I guess he'd be the one to provide any comment on the Harbor question that the Budget Committee is raising.
Well, and again, it's a, you know, it is a board policy issue, so, you know, that's something the board can decide on, on a future agenda.
Right.
And as to the, and as to the Opera House endowment, you know, I think that's something that we, we've talked about before, and we would also like to see done, but, you know, how do we make that happen? I mean, just thoughts in response to the Budget Committee question?
From my perspective on the Opera House, as a liaison to the Opera House Committee, I think we'd have to find a group of passion, citizens passionate in the town about the Opera House who care and want to support it and are willing to sort of do the equivalent of what the Library Foundation did for the library. And so that could be something the Opera House Committee talks about, and sort of, we've already tried to, you know, ask Bay Chamber to find young people who are sort of passionate about the Opera House, who might be on the Opera House Committee, so we can, you know, sort of have more energy. And, you know, there's a lot that can happen with that Opera House. It's a great facility that could be a wonderful gathering place, and of course, we're talking about it at a time when we haven't been able to use it. So, you know, I think, you know, Drew's got some great ideas for new things that can happen, so.
Well, and as I told the Opera House, I mean, the Budget Committee as well, he's, Drew has received a ton of phone calls about potential reservations for renting out the Opera House. So he's actually, he feels like he's had more calls this time of year for later on in the year than he's had in previous years, you know, non-pandemic. And it might just be because of the pent-up demand, you know, with things.
Exactly.
Yeah.
People want to start doing things again.
Right, things that have been postponed, things like that. So, I mean, he's, he's pretty excited about that, and he is starting to put some things together, so. But I think Denise is right, we need to have a group of, even if it starts with two or three or four people that are excited about the building and really want to promote that and raise money for it, would certainly help.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great idea, I think, to Denise's point, it's just finding people that want to do that and that will do that.
Okay, well, I don't think we have anything else to discuss on this workshop, right?
No, it's just if you wanted to make any, any, any changes in the, in the recommended numbers for the budget or not.
Yeah, so, so I wonder if what you're, I mean, you're suggest, I know you're not suggesting, but you're expressing concern about the $6,000 versus it was 10,000, right? So we're talking about $4,000 difference?
Correct.
So.
I thought, I heard you say you could handle it with a contingency if, I mean, I'm not trying, I'm not.
Yeah, no, and that's, and that's what I said, is that, you know, we've got 10,000 in the contingency amount, not that I like to earmark that, you know, before we even get into the budget. But I'm also hopeful that the Penn Bay Medical Center will participate in the cost of the study, and maybe the cost of the study decreases a little bit, you know, from the 20,000 number that we've got. It's, it's really hard for me to say because we haven't put together the outline or what we're, what we're looking for in that study yet. So we, we did get a rough number from a consultant that does this type of work, and that's what we were basing our budgeting numbers off, was that number. But again, you know, if we, if we put in 6,000 and Camden puts in 6,000, then we need, if it's 20, we need another 8,000, well.
Well, you know, far be it for me to be a little snarky, but considering everything else that Penn Bay gives us, not. They, it would be nice if they did kick in.
Yeah, and they're kicking in an equal amount for the current study that's wrapping up, so.
Well, there, that's good.
I think that's a possibility, and like I said, I've already raised that flag with the, with the doctors that are on the steering committee.
Well, and if Lincolnville isn't, if Lincoln and Hope end up not contributing, what does that mean? Does the study sort of not then include them?
Well, I mean, you, you kind of, you kind of have to, you know, from a real regionalization standpoint, it's hard to regionalize two communities. You know, and, and the thought also on that regionalization study is that it's not just necessarily the four communities. You know, it may be, it may be Rockland that's involved in that, it may be Union, it may be Warren, you know, it might be Thomaston. So we're looking at trying to, because you need to look at it in a bigger, in a bigger region than just the four communities. The four communities is the basis where we would start, and then hopefully pull in all the others as well. So maybe the price, you know, maybe it gets spread out amongst six towns instead of three or four.
Yeah.
So you, you've not heard anything about the, our neighboring towns not paying their yearly fee for the use of the service?
No.
You've just, all right, so, you know, I, I'm guessing if they're going to pay that, they'll probably kick in the other, but.
Well, it's been brought up, the reason I say that is because it's been brought up in Lincolnville to the, through their budget process, and there was no support for a regionalization study, and there was no support for first responders, for at least providing any funding for them. Hope has support for the study and for first responder program. It's just a matter of whether they, because currently they only have three select, select board members, so in order to pass anything, they have to have all three vote in favor. If they only have one, then nothing works. So that's why it's just difficult there. There's support there from the board members, but it's just up in the air.
I mean, I'm not going to lose too much sleep over it. I mean, you've got contingency money. If it comes to that, use it. If it doesn't, we're lucky, so.
Yeah, yeah, no, and I, and I'm comfortable with that, too.
Yeah, it sounds like you're giving us a heads up and not recommending necessarily that we put $4,000 more in the budget.
Right.
Okay. Okay, so what shall we do for the next 15 minutes?
Yeah, we can take a break. I had given Bruce Rockport AV a heads up that we might be ending early because there were no changes from the Budget Committee, so he'll put up a, a slide on the screen basically saying that the Select Board meeting will start at 5:30, so we can, we can take a break and come back for the 5:30 portion of the meeting.
Well, thank you to the Budget Committee for making our, our process so much easier.
Yes.
Yes, Megan, Megan and I worked through that two-hour meeting last week with them, but it was a very, I think it was a very good meeting with the Budget Committee, so.
Yeah, I joined on live stream. I thought it was a really good meeting, good discussion, so I appreciated their, their outcome, but I think they had a lot of, you know, a lot of questions around the way, along the way, and were thoughtful.
Yeah.
That raises, on this calendar, we have a meeting tomorrow night, the Budget?
Budget Committee does, yes. So they'll, the board in your regular agenda tonight will take your recommenda, recommendation votes on each section of the budget, and then tomorrow night, they'll do the same thing.
Okay, it, it shows Select Board at that meeting, but we don't need to be at that.
Yeah, you don't need to be at that meeting, and that probably will be a 10-minute meeting if that.
Okay.
Fingers crossed.
Okay, so we'll, we'll take a break until 5:30.
Yep.
Oh, wait a minute, do we, do we hang up and dial back in, or do we just stay on?
You can just stay on, that's fine.
All right, all right, thanks.
Thanks.
Good question.
Thanks, Megan.
Thank you, Megan.
Yes, thank you, Megan.
Okay.
Yep, anytime you're ready, Deb.
Hey, call to order the Select Board meeting of Monday, March 22nd, 2021. We're still working under the rules of the pandemic. Um, we are all here and the first item on the agenda is the town meantress report, Bill.
Yes, thank you. So I'll just go through this briefly. Again, it's my written report that's included with the packet. Couple of highlights, the the American Rescue Plan that was signed into law back on March 11th by the president. I'm sure you've all seen in the news that municipalities and counties and states will be getting funding directly from this plan, which we did not get in the previous plans. The estimates for Rockport at this point is that we'll be receiving about $335,000 as part of this plan. The details are still being worked out and we don't really have any guidelines, any detailed guidelines as to how we get this money, when we get this money. I've seen anything from two payments. With one coming, I know, I know one payment will be basically 90 days from the March 11th date. Not sure if that'll be all of the amount or if there'll be a second payment a year after that. And we are still waiting for guidance from the Department of Treasury, US Department of Treasury as to what we, what we can use that money for. It's they're very broad. What is very broad language in the American Rescue Plan. Basically saying that we can use it to respond to the coronavirus health emergency or its negative economic impacts. To assist impacted industries may also be used to replace lost municipal revenue to make necessary investments in water sewer and broadband infrastructure could also be used to pay employees above and beyond, if you will, for for hazard pay, things like that. But again, not a lot of details on that at this point.
Um, Bill, one question on that. There are things that we, you know, want to talk about with respect to that. But I noticed that there's an ARP warrant article that you have later on in the agenda. And do you want to explain why you have that as a placeholder for the warrant?
Yeah, sure. So in speaking with the town's attorneys, I had asked them to draft an article for the time meeting warrant that would allow the basically the board to would the town, the article would would authorize the board to accept funding and spend it per the program requirements. That way we don't have any issues with accepting that and spending that, spending that money. So I have the language. I just don't have it fully in the warrant yet, but I will put it in there.
So that can remain neutral. It's just spending, I mean, funding receipt authority that we're getting.
And expenditure authority.
Okay.
Yep. Any other questions around that? At this point, I mean, I'm still be as I get more details, you know, like certainly we'll provide input and information to the board as I get that. The seat, the roads have been posted. You probably have noticed if you've driven around as of March 16th. Public Works Department posted the roads to heavy loads to protect them as the frost leaves the ground, what little frost there is. Don't know the length of the posting. That's always the first question that comes to people's minds. We don't know until we see what kind of weather we get. So if the weather keeps like it is this week for a few weeks, then we'll be, we'll be good. And the postings can come down sooner. If it gets colder, then they'll have to stay on longer. You'll recall the wastewater lean legislation, which is LD 256 entitled an act to adjust sewer and wastewater lean fees was sponsored by Representative DeDere on behalf of basically us. I'm pleased to say that it came out of the Energy Utilities and Technology Committee with a unanimous ought to pass, which generally bodes very well for legislation in a full legislature. And the committee also amended the bill to include an annual CPI increase going forward in that fee. So we were hopeful that that would be the case, but we didn't want to overstep our bounds when we first put that bill into the legislature. And we actually had it built in first, then we took it out and then Vicky presented that as a possible amendment. And that was agreed to by the committee. The other bill that is in the legislature for us, the LD 94, an act to allow municipalities to exempt volunteer firefighters from paying excise tax on their vehicle, vehicles used to respond to fire calls. Typical legislation has a very lengthy title. Representative DeDere also sponsored this legislation on our behalf. And the public hearing on the bill is scheduled for March 31st at nine in the morning. And that's in front of the taxation committee. Certainly if anybody has select board members wants to provide written testimony or testify in in person over Zoom, you certainly can do that. I will be providing testimony and also testifying in person. I've emailed about 40 of my colleagues that I know were interested in this bill to encourage them to provide testimony as well. As I said previously, MMA's LPC voted to not support this bill. Vicky, sorry, Representative DeDere had conversations and I've had conversations with the lobbyists for the Maine Fire Chiefs Association. They originally were going to testify in opposition of this bill. I think that she's convinced them to testify neither for nor against. They were, they were concerned because they have other bills in, in the legislature for funding. So they didn't want to be seen as being too aggressive, which is what they were saying in their stance, but I think that they're going to be taken neither for nor against position. I've also emailed several fire chiefs that I know. And they'll be hopefully submitting testimony and or testifying as well. Chris, Chief Chris White Talk from Rockland has, has said to me that I can use his name of one that's being in support. Waiting to hear from Chief Farley. And others that I've contacted. So hopefully I'll have a list of those chiefs that I can speak on behalf of when it comes to the 31st, which is I guess next, next week. The wastewater treatment plant study is progressing along. The engineers have been focusing this past, this past week on compiling flows and load data so that they can use that as the basis of sizing a potential new facility. And they've been targeting potential properties in town where the facility could possibly be located. Once they have that information, they'll start estimating the cost of the new facility, proposed new facility, possible new facility. Based on the treatment technology they select that would be appropriate for the size and the flows that the facility would receive. I expect that they'll do a final presentation of the study to the board in May, which would allow enough time for the engineers to complete the report, get it to me so that I could review it with the staff as well, incorporate any changes and have the final product to review, to review with the board.
Would that be our, our May 10th meeting?
I don't know at this point. That's what I'm shooting for.
Okay.
Yep, that's what I'm shooting for, but we'll see how it progresses. I'll check in with the engineers this week again, see how far along they've done. Old Nut Farm Road and Shiblets Lane. So this is off Beach Hill, these two roads that are subdivision, it's in a subdivision, the two roads in the subdivision. I've been having conversations with the Neighborhood Association there about they're proposing to ask that these be placed, that this be placed on the warrant. It will not be for the June warrant, so I we've agreed that this should be on the November warrant because it's just simply isn't enough time to have all the reviews done according to the municipal road acceptance ordinance. But I just wanted to get it on your radar screen that this will be coming up for the November ballot for discussion. Northeast Mobile Health Services, since they've had this new supervisor in place at the Rockport Station. Communication has picked up. And I will say that I think the performance has picked up pretty, pretty well as well. Their, their staffing levels are, they're basically back at full staffing, so they've got staffing around the clock. 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Their response times have been solid. Jonathan Powers is the supervisor here locally and he's been in place since I think November, December, along those lines. He's been quick to respond with any questions that Chief Peasler I have. Want to say also that they have that they're purchasing what's called a fly car in the industry that will be based here in Rockport. And essentially what this is, is a either an SUV or a pickup truck or something along those lines that will be marked with their insignias and such as an, as an emergency vehicle and that they can use to respond to. I'll say lesser emergencies that might not necessarily need an ambulance. So if there's a fall assist or something along those lines, then they can respond with one staff member with that vehicle and not tie up an ambulance. So I see that as a, as a big step forward and an improvement there. Also, they have ordered a new ambulance for the Rockport location and that's expected to be in service this spring, probably in May. An older, an older vehicle. So that's always a good thing as well. So I think in general, it's been, it's been much improved having a supervisor directly on site that we can communicate with. And it's also there to make sure that the staff is held accountable. And, and increasing the staff as well. Camden Real Estate had reached out to Library Director Ben Blackman about doing a 360 degree photo tour of the inside of the library building. And they're using this as part of their marketing plan for the area, marketing to potential new residents, people purchasing homes in the area. So they came in on March 17th and took the photos. And the link is was sent, I sent that out to the select board. So you could view it. That's also free for us to be able to use. So we'll be putting it on the website, the library website and distributing it that way. Kramer Park, those of you that may have been into Kramer Park. You'll notice that Public Works has done a nice job trimming trees in that park, trimming some brush back, making it basically more user friendly. It's been, maintenance has been lacking there for quite a while. We did this with a couple of goals in mind. Number one is to have more people utilize the park, but also to increase parking in that park as well and make it easier for people to, to park. And I think it's, I think it's a much, much improvement. I will say that we had a, an abutting landowner while the crew was down there, came down and talked with Mike, Mike Young, the Public Works Director, and actually was pleased that there was maintenance going on in the park. So that was certainly a, a good thing. They will be doing some road work, putting some gravel in and grading that so that the road is, is better as well as soon as the snow and ice is, is off the road. But just simply by trimming back some of the trees and the branches, it allows the sun to come into that park much more, which will in turn keep the road better as well.
So.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, you know, the parking committee, committee has been talking about this for a while and, and coordinating with Bill and Mike about this. And so it's contemplated that some lighting is going to be put in there as well. And there's room for how many cars parking?
Well, we think we've added, we've actually will be adding space because we will be placing some gravel in areas that are, that are flat, digging out some dirt, some stumps and things like that on the edges of the road. And we think we can probably gain 15 to 20 spaces within that park. And still have plenty of space for, you know, for the picnic tables and for people to actually enjoy the park as well. And what we've got to decide is historically there have been boat trailers parked up there as well. And so we're going to have to, you know, decide how many spaces do we want to reserve for that? Because that's for people that, you know, may launch and, and leave their vehicle for two or three days, something along those lines. So we'll have to figure that out going forward. One last topic that's not in the written report, we did receive a refund from Maine Municipal Association's Workers Compensation Insurance. We have gotten these the last few years. Generally, they've been in the $3,000, $3,500 range. This one was for $8,209. So again, this is the benefits of our employee safety program and the fact that we haven't had many accidents, if any, in the last year. So I credit that again to the department heads and the employees that are just staying safe and following our, our plans and policies. So it's certainly fantastic. That's a very large refund to come back to the town.
Bill, Bill sort of throwing that back into the fund balance. Is there any opportunity? I know we've talked about other such refunds that we've gotten because of work well done to put that in a fund that we could use to further our safety trainings and such.
It already does, Mark. Well, I think it was last year, maybe the year before, when I had asked the board to create a reserve fund and designate that funds to go into that. So it's, so that goes back to employee safety. So that will go into that reserve fund for employee, employee safety. And in turn that, you know, helps us reduce what we put in the budget for the employee safety. So that's some of the reductions we've done in this year's budget, or I should say next year's budget.
Any other questions or comments? So seeing none. Hearing none. Bill, is there any public input on non-agenda items?
I'm not sure what this comment means. I'm not sure if it's for an agenda item or a non-agenda item. So I'm just going to provide it. It's over the live stream. It's from Marsha Stein Glass and she says, if you're, if you really want to know what residents think, don't tell them what to think. So I assume that's in relation to the short-term rental potential ordinance. So but I just wanted to put that out there.
Is that it?
That is it at this point, yes.
Okay. Are there amendments to the agenda suggested?
None for me.
And I don't see anybody raising their hand. Okay. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, meeting minutes of March 8th and 9th.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
All second.
I think that was Jeff. We should give it to him, Michelle, since he's
That's good.
between Peru and Mexico. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, then roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, moving on to action items. The first item is to act on the committee applications. We have two committee, two applications for the Economic Development Committee. So thank you both, Ms. Fogel and Mr. Brown for submitting your applications and for joining us today. And so Sonny, you're listed here first. Would you like to say a few words about your interest in the Economic Development Committee?
Yeah, when I was on the select board was when we had to do all the deliberations for the school and who was interested. We went from having to tear down some of the temporary buildings and then the media workshop and college decided they could have a, a, have their whole facility there and they would rebuild the buildings. And then when they've actually looked over the buildings, there was no possibility of, of saving any of those buildings. So they were torn down and then there was a lot of talk about what should come. And since this is a gateway into the village on our side of the of the village, it's important to, everybody has an idea of what they'd like to see there. And the variation is tremendous and what needs to be saved and doesn't need to be saved. So I, I would just like to be in on the continuing conversation because it's a very important place to make it creative, beautiful and serving as many people of the town of Rockport than that we can.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
I guess I'm, it sounds, Son, it sounds like you're focused on the RES site. Is that?
That's correct.
Rather than overall economic development in Rockport.
No, I mean, I think that that was coming next. I'd like to I'd like to be in on other economic development as well. But I have a question regarding that. There seems to be an RES committee as well.
There is, there is an RES committee. And I wonder, as I listen to you, that you would be um, you know, valuable to to give input. I don't remember if there is a. Vacancy on that committee or that task force. It's actually a task force. Um and it's under the umbrella of the overall Economic Development Committee. And I don't know offhand if there is a vacancy, although I think that. Well, I don't want to speak out of turn, but um there might be a vacancy if there's not now. Um and I wonder if um that's something that you might want to apply for.
I'm particularly interested in that right now because I think that's coming along. Sooner rather than later.
Yeah, right. And the Economic Development Committee itself tries not to get involved in the RES stuff, so um because. Because we do have that RES task force. So I'm I'm wondering if maybe we should talk offline on uh on 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 that. Um because that might be what you're most interested in.
Yeah, it would be. Uh I didn't realize that until I read up about the uh. The different conversations that have been going on in the last couple. So probably more appropriate.
Okay, okay, well, we can uh talk to you about that. That's great. Um any other thing else for Sonny? Okay, um Barrett Brown?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Um so, you know, my interest is I've I moved with my wife here in ninety-seven. We've lived here, raised our four kids. Our last is in high school. I've been running a business, Cedar Works, based here in Rockport. And uh, you know, frankly, I'm just interested in being able to provide whatever um insights or who knows even if I have a skill or two to offer to the group to. My overall goal is to make Rockport a place um not just for the citizens, but I can imagine someday for families with kids like mine who would like to come back here and live. So it's a place that's livable. It's a place that's affordable and it's a place where businesses can thrive, the arts can thrive. You know, we have a pretty special thing. Um I'm sure it can be better and I just would like to be able to have a chance to provide some input into. Decisions the Select Board makes um as a member of the Development Committee.
Questions of the Select Board for Barrett? I I note that um David Pio, uh the Chair of the Economic Development Committee had um. Had uh uh recommended um Barrett for um for the position. Any questions?
I guess in light of Sonny's real interest being in the RES task force, I would move that we um. Appoint Barrett Brown to the opening. Oops, I don't have my language in front of me, though.
Oh, sorry.
I can do it, Denise. I I move the board appoint Barrett Brown to the Economic Development Committee with a term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Denise, second, okay. Um, all right, uh any further discussion? Okay, let's vote on this and Sonny will come back to you, okay? Roll call, Jeff?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So um Sonny, um can we um can we circle back to you? Um Bill, will you make sure that um you do that as well? Um and put you in touch with Amanda. Amanda Dwali is the Chair of the RES Task Force. And um as I said, we may, I don't know if we have an opening, we may have an opening, but I. Tend to think that it's gonna be an opening uh soon, even if we don't. So I think with your history on that, it would be um, you know, valuable. Valuable.
So did I be in touch with her or what?
No, I'll um Sonny, I'll check to see if we've got an opening or not, um and I'll I'll communicate with you and um the Chair of the Task Force.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you all. I uh sorry, I got that confused, but.
No, no problem.
Thank you for your interest, Sonny.
That's okay, Sonny, and we 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 were able to um to ferret out your interest in RES and that's gonna be great.
Okay, thank you.
And welcome, Barrett. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Yep, goodbye.
Bye bye.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to act on the non-binding article for the town meeting warrant regarding the STR ordinance. Bill, do you wanna, you you drafted this, you want to?
Uh yeah, I did draft it with some input. Um so uh I'll I'll just read it for those that may be watching. Um and again. I've just taken a a best stab at this to start the discussion, so you can completely butcher it, murder it, send it back, throw it away, whatever you'd like to do. So the question, as I've put it, is Article XX, Non-Binding Referendum. Do you favor the development of a town ordinance that would regulate short-term rent? Parenthesis Airbnb, VRBO, et cetera, close parenthesis, activity in the town of Rockport by requiring. STR registration requiring minimum safety standards be met. And that such ordinance be intended to strike a balance between the community's quality of life while preserving the ability of STR owners to generate income. I did add an explanation there. Um. This is a non-binding question from the Select Board seeking your opinion only. If supported, the town will draft an ordinance regulating short-term rentals as outlined above for a future vote. If not supported, the town will not draft an ordinance for a future vote. And that that explanation is very much similar to what the fireworks um non-binding question was. Um as an explanation, just to try to keep people, you know, make it clear to them what it is. So have at it.
Well, does it make sense to make the motion and then through discussion we can tweak it or?
Yeah, sure, Jeff, go ahead.
I'll go ahead. I move the board approve the non-binding article regarding the short-term ordinance as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, Denise, you can have it. Denise just seconded, okay. Uh discussion.
I I wanna, I've heard from several folks and we've seen um some letters and I think the comment in the. Uh livestream along the same lines, there's some concern by some of the residents who have been opposed to a short-term rental regulation. That the last clause where we say, and that such ordinance be intended to strike a balance. Between the community's quality of life while preserving preserving the ability of STR owners to generate income. Sounds to them like, are you in favor of motherhood and apple pie? And how could anyone not vote for that? I guess I, and I I I was listening to that. I I sort of think of it as the other way around. That the authority the Select Board had is would be given if this was approved by the voters would be to ensure. That that balance is struck in any ultimate short-term rental regulation, that it's incumbent on. That future Select Board if the voters support any short-term rental regulation. That there be a balance between those needs because certainly some of the short-term rental regulations we've seen. Um from various communities in Maine, um you could argue pretty strongly they don't, they're really um. I guess sort of weigh in on the side of preserving quality of life and are very dismissive of the income needs of the short-term rental owners. So I guess I just want to throw that out where I can sort of see how that language. I think was intended to be helpful to make sure that any sh- a a future short-term rental regulation. Would strike that balance and that that would be sort of the authority that the voters have given to the Select Board is to ensure. That such future regulation would strike that balance. So I just, I. I I I think I I can think of it in a slightly different way, but I definitely have heard that concern from some residents.
Well, I'll strike in, why not? Bill, do we have or? Dever, as far as that goes, but Bill, do we have uh? Any type of requirements uh for someone to fulfill? To bring such a request forward to the Select Board to consider?
No, we don't. There there's nothing, there's. There's there's no requirements there. I mean, if you remember from the fireworks um. Non-binding question, it was simply a complaint from a resident um. About fireworks. And then we did ask for feedback from the public, if you remember, through the website and Facebook and and we received um. Several, but we didn't, there's there's no guidance, there's no policy in place.
But in order for, in order for a non-binding question to be put on in in that case. There was guidance as to how many signatures had to be required by us, if I'm not mistaken.
There were no signatures on.
Did, didn't she bring a petition? I if I recall, there was a petition provided with the appropriate amount of signatures on it for us to look at and it's on the ballot.
It wasn't a ballot.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a valid petition in the same way that the other petition we got on short-term rentals was, and it didn't have the required number. It didn't really.
It didn't, it wasn't worded, it wasn't worded correctly. Yeah, there was, she did put a petition together, but it wasn't um now that I, now that you jogged my memory, Mark. Um there was a petition that she stood, she stood outside the polls. I don't remember when it was. Might have been the March primary even. Um but it wasn't worded uh in the proper legal manner and she didn't have the number, proper number of signatures. That were needed, you know, by by sta- by statute. But now you jogged my memory. She, yes, she did have, she did have some sort of a petition.
We addressed this at the last meeting and we, as I recall, we took a vote and the vote was to put a non-binding article on and to draft it. So I think what's really on the agenda today. Is the wording of the non-binding article. We did.
As long as we're in the conversation.
But can I finish? Can I finish?
Well, as long.
I was just going, I was just going in direct.
I wouldn't finish talking with Bill.
Mark, I'm, okay, Mark, I was, I was trying to give a response to you, which is that. As a reminder, at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that the board always has the discretion to place a non-binding item on the agenda. It's not the with the the surveys can make it mandatory, but in this case, it was discretionary.
Do you recall if their question was asked that I asked about whether we had requirements? That's why I asked the question.
That's why I just responded and told you that there's no requirements.
Right, but that's why I asked the question. I mean, I'm not gonna jump right into voting for something unless I know a better picture. Of everything, you know. I I've never said that I wasn't in favor of it. I've often said that I would rather have further discussions in public. And we did decide to table it until. We could get together during the summer potentially and then put it on the November ballot. And then after a certain few, and I use a a few in a loose terms, uh came forward. Then, you know, it went from a uh four to one vote not to put it on. Uh to a vote to put it on. So, you know, we're sending mixed messages. I think around the town as to where we're, whether we're caving a little bit to the the village. And I use that because it's often used by people from outside of the village. So I still haven't made up one hundred percent as to how I'm going to vote for it, but this doesn't help me with this worded. Uh very wordy. Uh ballot question, so.
I respectfully suggest that you're confusing apples and oranges in the statement that you made because we are not. Retracting or changing our mind. What happened was we decided not to put. The actual registration ordinance on the ballot. We're still not putting or considering putting the registration ordinance on the ballot. What we did receive was not a few signatures. We received a a petition from thirty-four people, as I recall. And then a couple of additional people who couldn't find the petition that was circulating. And so we, you know, it was a number of people who who requested that we put it on the ballot. Um we still declined to put it on the ballot. We're not putting the registration ordinance on the ballot. But what we did decide was that it made sense to survey our voters, and that's what this does, is it surveys our voters.
My concern would be if we had just an up or down, I'm sorry, Mark, did I cut you off?
No, I I was just gonna say that I don't think I was confused at all. I knew exactly what I said, you know. The first one was the vote down to put the warrant article on. And the second one was to seek out. Some wording to put on for June vote. I mean, I knew what I was saying and. You know, I, go ahead.
I know what you, I know you know what you're saying and you know what we're doing, Mark. I'm just suggesting that the way in which you said it. Was confusing because it makes it sound like we're reversing gears and because of a few people, we're putting the ordinance back on the ballot, which we're not. Um as I've just described.
And what I was gonna say is that I think in contrast to the fireworks ordinance, I think when we voted. To have Bill draft this, there was a recognition that it might not be as simple as. Do you favor development of a town ordinance that would regulate short-term rentals, period? Because that doesn't really tell people. I mean, we're pretty far along in terms of an analysis and I think it's more helpful to the voters to see that. And I think it can cut both ways. I mean, I I know that the opponents of the short-term rental registration regulation are concerned that this is worded in a way. That is gonna be unfairly resulting in town pe- townspeople. Who really don't want a short-term rental regulation, but they're gonna vote for this because of the way it's worded. And I I guess I I don't see that. I I appreciate what they're saying, but I. I feel like we, it's incumbent on us to give them some guidance as to what would be, what that might look like.
I.
Well, I I think the guidance would come along in the form of the ordinance. You know, uh, you know, not not putting it out before them now what we believe it's going to be. But just asking them simply, do you think there should be or not? And then if we get the thumbs up, we draft something with the appropriate guidance. And if we don't get the thumbs up, we don't. But by giving them all of this uh ahead of time, it sort of leads them in a direction. In my opinion, but I'll let, I'll let those that are in favor of it talk.
No, I'll I'll go because I I agree with you, Mark, and I've had also a number of people reach out and I get your, I get your point, Denise, that. We've come a long way. We've had a long, a lot of conversations, but I think, you know, when I, when I read things like, you know. Requiring minimum safety and it's you're striking a balance that. We're, we are putting into people's mind that we want to preserve this as though there is something really wrong right now. And I think we haven't come to the conclusion that there's something really wrong. So I think if we want to ask and survey, it is. Do you favor an ordinance? I mean, people are concerned that their property rights are going to be taken away, right? We've heard it from day one. Um and I think if we, if we really want to survey people, it is, do you think we need an ordinance for this? Do we think that? You know, we need a short-term rental, I a sho- short-term rental ordinance. I don't think we need the extra verbiage. Um I think when we put in something about ST owners generating income, I think it's the perception that that's all people are doing is trying to generate income. So. I think if we want to survey, it needs to be, do you want it or do you not want it? Um that's just my opinion.
Denise. One suggestion made, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, is that rather than putting the um. The sort of extra explanation of what's meant by a short-term rental regulation. Is to put that in the explanation so that there is some guidance for voters who really don't know what we're talking about. Rather than having it in the actual language of the non-binding referendum, and that was suggested by some. Folks who are opposed to this and want this, you know, they don't. They're opposed to short-term rental regulations, but they thought perhaps if it was in the explanation provision. That that would, they would feel better about that.
So maybe something along the lines of an ordinance would require blank, blank, blank as part of ex- as part of the. Explanation versus the actual article. Is that what, is that what you mean?
But in the explanation, it's not part of the actual thing that they're voting on.
Right, it would not bind a future, if it, if the overall, this is how I would see it, is if the referendum was. You know, stopped at the end of, you know, favorite development of an ordinance that would regulate short-term rental in the town of Rockport, period. And then the explanation contained the sort of framework of what was envisioned. I think the Select Board, i- if that got approved by the voters. And then the Select Board moved forward with short-term rental regulations, I guess the question I have is, are they in any way. Uh limited by what's in the explanation. Whereas I would argue they would be limited if it had been in the non-binding referendum.
Right, it's it's it's, it's just like, i- it's just when you, i- i- it's like legislation. When you draft legislation, if you've got a title that says one thing. That, you know, usually there's, there's legislative construction and everything that basically says that the title. That, you know, usually there's, there's legislative construction and everything that basically says that the title is not a substantive part of. Of the legislation. And so that's, this is what Denise is saying, that if you've got an explanation that says, you know, whatever it says. It's really the wording of the actual question that is, it's not binding anyway. But is what one would argue that the voters actually voted on. So I agree with Denise that actually those who oppose. Um, any kind of ordinance are truly better off with it the way it is, but I, I certainly don't support. The idea of just putting out something out there that says short-term rental reg- you know, should we, should we? Should we regulate short-term rental regulation? Because eighty percent of the town doesn't even know what we're talking about when we say that. And I, you know, I support it the way it is.
Deborah, can I, there are several live stream comments. I don't know when you'd like to, um, hear those.
Are they lengthy or are they short or what?
Um, they're, they're, they're pretty short. They're just, there's just several of them.
I was going to ask you to paraphrase them if they're lengthy, but okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, uh, E. Jones says, and this was, this was twelve minutes ago they started, so just so you can try to have that in your, in your minds as part of your discussion. Hello, select board. Can the board please circle back to the language in the STR question mark? Presently, the language is not neutral. It should be neutral and, and a lot of these are around what you, what the points have been raised anyway. He further says, stating a proposed ordinance would require minimum safety standards be met is highly misleading. The standard required is actually the STRs be brought up to the current building code. Melissa McCool says, uh, not just the last sentence, the first part of the language is heavily leaning towards having STR regulation.
And, um, just in response to something you just said, you know. People have to understand that this does not in any way support or reject the ordinance that's out there. In fact, your explanation says that the town will draft an ordinance. Or they will not draft an ordinance, which presupposes that it's not the ordinance that we've all been working on. Go ahead.
Uh, E. Jones again says bringing some STRs to code could be a large undertaking costing an owner thousands of dollars. Uh, Melissa McCool says you are surveying the wa- voters in a biased way again. Tiffany Lavery Ford says the folks that were surveyed didn't understand the ordinance as it is ambiguous at best. Not exactly sure what that means. Martha Steinglass says, yes, it can be that simple. Uh, Melissa McCool says then the referendum should support for the STR owners as well as those opposed. Jones, go ahead.
I, I'm not trying to understood this last, Melissa McCool's last statement.
Should, well, I think what she said earlier was that if, she seems that the question that I had drafted was biased towards. Those that were opposed or not short-term rental owners. So she says the referendum, excuse me, should show support for the. STR owners as well as those opposed. So I guess biased in both ways. So then it's evened out.
Yeah.
She says it's the leading question, the way that it's written. Excuse me. And then I'm just going through to see what we've got for substance. Some people agree with what Michelle has said, another agrees with what Marcus said. Marsha Steinglass says it should be a yes, no question, which I think that it is worded that way anyway. It's either yes or no.
Yeah.
And my, uh, Melissa McCool says the last comment, since most of the town does not understand this question, then we. Do not need to lead them with any points for STR regulations.
Well, I think that's precisely why you can't have just a, the, the first line, basically, which is what some of them are advocating.
That's it for comments at this point.
Denise, anything further?
No, I mean, I, I appreciate the, the dilemma, but I guess I, I do feel like. I- in my view, it's, it's better to have some limitations and constraints on what would happen in the future with a short-term rental. Registration regulation, and I think that's what this proposal does. I don't, I wouldn't want to see it sort of. Anyway, I, I think this actually is more protective for short-term rental owners.
But wouldn't we come out with all of that when we crafted the ordinance?
Well, I think you're setting a standard that says that it's supposed to strike a balance between the community's quality of life while preserving the ability of STR owners to generate income. That's a standard that you're setting for a future select board. That's what Denise has been trying to say. And otherwise, if you don't have that in there, you're not setting a standard to be. To be, that you're seeking to meet. So you're also setting up a situation where you can have, you know, STR owners in the future that come back and say, you haven't struck the balance. You were supposed to strike a balance and you haven't done it.
I guess I wondered, I was just thinking about Michelle's comment that. For STR owners, for them, it's about more than just generating income. Is that where you were headed, Michelle? That it's. We're sort of not.
Oh yeah, I mean, it's not, you, you're, not all STR owners are in it to generate an income. Many of them are to keep their homes in Rockport. It is, you know, it's a way to, to finance that. It's a way to, you know, keep homes for their children. I mean, they're not in it. The way it sounds is that all of these STR owners are just in it, they're big business and they're in it to make money. And as a result, they're impacting our neighborhoods and that's just, that's just not true. And so I think when we, we put that phrase in, it, you know, it, the way it paints it is. We want to protect you. We want, you know, that's the balance which we're trying to strike. And yes, of course we want to protect. Who wouldn't want to preserve their neighborhood? But I think that it, from a short-term rental perspective, it's, it's not all just about making money. I can assure you. Maybe there's some short-term rental owners out there that really aren't making a profit by the time they pay expenses and insurance and maintenance. So I just think we need to be really careful about how we are setting that up and how we're putting that. I mean, a lot of people in the, in what I have received have. Said that we're leading people. Um, I want to make sure we're not leading people. I want to make sure when someone's in that voter box that. They're saying, yes, do, do I think there's a problem? Do I think we need an ordinance? I mean, at the end of the day, we're, we're saying, you know, we, we are putting restrictions on our, our property owners and I just want us to be very, very careful about that.
Right, well, anything we do in that regard, we are putting restrictions and there are restrictions and it's endemic to living in any kind of municipality. But, um, I, I understand what you're saying about the generating income though, Michelle, and I just wonder if you have some other words there. Um, although the examples you gave are certainly generating income, we're not saying making a profit. Um, you're generating income, with, no matter what the reason is, I don't, I don't have to tell you that. It's still the generation of income, so. Um, I mean, unless you're doing it for free, you're generating income. So are there a couple of words that you would use instead of generating income?
Well, I, I don't know because personally I don't like anything past the do you favor development, so I didn't really do additional work as to. How we would want to word it because I frankly, I, I don't like the additional words that have been added. You know, I, I think we could say owners to, you know, STR, STR to continue to own and operate. You know, whatever. I just think generating income is a, it, it just sends about, it sends a, a different message to people than what I want to send.
Right, because you're talking about, I mean, like, even though it is generating income and then you use the income to pay your taxes. But the argument, I guess what I'm sort of hearing is that it's, you know, to be able to stay in their house or.
Why can't you just say to rent property, to rent their property? Take out, uh, generate income, STR owners to, to, to rent their property? If you think that generate, generating income, although it's, although it's. If, if you, if you think that has sort of a, you know, connotation that you don't like, then what about preserving the ability of STR owners to rent their property?
Better, yes, better than income, absolutely.
Yeah, and that's a more neutral term, isn't it?
Yeah, I think it makes it sound a little bit more neutral.
Right, because I, I was sort of thinking of, um, some comments we had early on for people who actually wouldn't be affected by. At least what we had as the draft ordinance because they're not in zoning districts that are affected by it, but. You know, who like to meet people from all over the world. You know, it's just fun to bring people to Rockport and show them your town.
Okay, any other? Suggested changes?
I've received like three more comments if you'd like to hear those.
Sure.
Tiffany Lavery Ford basically said, should there, should there be an STR ordinance drafted for a future vote, yes or no? So she's given you her, um, what she thinks the question should be. Melissa McCool said this, this conversation is why we should table this now and talk in person when we can. So much is getting lost in transa- translation. Do you all know how frustrating this is for us sitting here at a keyboard? Ethan Jones says maybe someday the select board could put together a comprehensive paper which states why any STR ordinance is actually required. What are the problems with the STRs, et cetera?
Yeah, and we've done that numerous times. Presentations on that, yes.
So those are the, those are the comments.
Okay, anything else in the select board? Okay, so we have a first, uh, and a second. Oh wait a minute, we need to, uh, what about?
We have to amend it with the language?
Jeff, um, it was your motion. Do you favor amendment or not?
I'm still here. Uh, in the spirit of. Uh, collaboration here, I will amend my motion such that the last sentence. That the last few words are changed to ability of short-term owners to rent their property. Question mark. Scratch to generate income.
Denise, you had seconded it.
Seconded the amendment.
You seconded the amendment. Okay, any further comments? Okay, roll call vote. Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Mark?
You're in the hard spot, Deborah. No here.
I vote yes. Okay. I think that's it there. We're on to the next item, which is the last of our action items. Act on the FYE twenty-two budget. Bill?
Yes, so, um, after your budget workshop, um. Megan had put in. After the budget committee's workshop, I should say, last week. Um, with their consensus votes on the budget numbers. Megan put those into the draft town meeting warrant, which you have in your materials. Uh, so the recommendation is that since the board. Met in a workshop just before this to consider, uh, those numbers from the budget committee and didn't make any changes. So the recommendation is that you would, um, approve each. Uh, amount for each of those separate areas of the budget, um, individually and take a, uh, take a vote on those. So you would start with, uh, Article Five. And work your way through and simply making a vote to recommend. The total amount for Article Five, which in this case would be one million, four ninety-five, one hundred and twenty dollars. And then work your way through. There's only. I guess two handfuls of them.
Okay, should we just get started?
Let's do it.
Okay, I move we approve the, oh shoot, gotta go back and forth. I move we approve the budget for general government in the amount of one million, four hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and twenty dollars.
Second. You're on, you're on mute, Deborah. I seconded it anyway.
Yes, and I asked if there was any discussion, but you wouldn't have known that. Okay, uh, as I said, this is the hard part now. Uh, Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Next up is Article Six, which is, uh, public assistance. The amount is twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ten.
I move we approve twenty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars for public assistance.
Mark, Mark seconds.
Discussion? All right, roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, next, I think, uh, Article Seven.
I move we approve the expenditure of one, one million, eight hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars for public safety.
I'll second.
Discussion? All right, Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Denise, you're on a roll.
Let's keep on, Denise.
All right, go for it. I move we approve the sum of two million, fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and seven dollars for Public Works.
I'll second.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Article Nine?
I move we approve the sum of seven hundred and fifty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-three dollars for culture and recreation.
Michelle, you're on a roll too.
Second.
All right, Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Article Ten?
I move we approve the sum of four hundred, six thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for long-term debt payments.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Article Eleven?
I move we approve the sum of one hundred nine thousand, one hundred nineteen dollars for county fees.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Article Twelve?
I move we approve the sum of seventy-four thousand, five hundred and seventy dollars for cemeteries and special assessments.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Um, Mark?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Article Thirteen?
I move we approve the sum of two million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars as revenue to be used in reducing the property tax assessment.
Second.
Discussion? Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
I vote yes. All right, that's all you need from us, right, Bill?
That's it for now. Next, uh, at your next meeting, you'll have the town meeting warrant for approval. Which will incorporate the budget votes on both sides, um, as well as language for the other articles.
Great. All right, um, we now have, um, two discussion items. The first being, uh, the proposal to create a community garden at Marge Jones Fields. Bill?
Yes, so, um. In your materials, there was a proposal from the Parks and Mortification Committee to, um. Create community gardens at Marge Jones recreational fields, basically be beside or between, I'll say, the basketball courts. And the parking area, um, that is the, the area for the, uh, Babe Ruth baseball field. I will say that, so I, I, I went out with, um, Public Works Director Mike Young and I went out to the, uh, Marge Jones Fields. And took measurements based on, uh, what their proposal was, was originally they were looking at a hundred by a hundred and fifty-foot area. In that, in that, um, lawn area that's between those two, uh, spaces. And that's way too large. Um, so I contacted Doug Cole, who's, um, spearheaded this idea from my understanding. And, um. Then we met him out there on that cold windy Friday last week. And did measurements again with him there and. We basically came up with an area that's. Let me look at my notes. It's about a hundred and fifteen by ninety-two feet is really the maximum we can get in there, which is smaller than the one fifty by one hundred. So just keeping that in mind. The other request that they had for this was, uh, for this first year was to. Have an electric fence around the, uh, garden area for, to keep out, uh, animals such as deer and, and alike. Um, I talked with him about that and expressed my concern that there are kids that do play out in those fields, obviously. Um, and there are baseballs that will be foul, foul balls that will leave the playing surface of the baseball diamond and will land in there in the garden area. And so after discussions, we, we thought that maybe we could just do some sort of a, uh, a fence around it perhaps. Not an electric fence necessarily. But one that would still keep out, um, deer mainly and, and other animals from that, but still be accessible for ball players, coaches, fans that might be retrieving baseballs without the risk of getting a, a slight electric shock from the electric fence. So he was, he was amenable to that. He had stopped and looked at the community gardens at Erickson Fields and they, and noticed what kind of fence that they used there, which basically is just like a, an eight-foot tall, um, plastic mesh, uh, fence. Um, I don't have any costs associated with that at this point, but that would be something that would be amenable to them as well. So essentially for this first year, what they're looking, um, for permission to do is to move ahead with the project so that we can get this off the ground for this planting season. The, the rotor tilling of the, um, of the area would be accomplished with funds that we, we have, um, currently in the budget. Uh, we're only talking probably, you know, a few hundred dollars to do that. Um, the fencing would be, I, I don't have a price for that. We would have to see if we could do that out of this budget or next. Um, but I don't think it would be that costly for that type of fencing, um, to get that up. And then we would have to, um, use their guidelines for the cost of the plots for people and develop some sort of permitting structure, which they have, um, submitted some, some forms and the like, that they've put together that would, um, allow us to track who has the, um, access and there's a liability waiver and the like, so. I certainly support this. Uh, there's really no other space, uh, out at Marge Jones Fields for this to be used, uh, or to be, to be located. Um, that's any better than what, what they've identified. There's parking there. Uh, there is a, a shed that's one, one side of it is used by the, um, ba- for baseball equipment, storage and the like. Um, the other side could be used for, um, storage of tools. Uh, you know, hand tools for those people that may, um, use the community garden area. There's a water spigot at that shed that can be utilized as well. So I think all in all, it's a pretty, a pretty good use of that space.
So where, where's the, where would the funding come from? I know you said we have it, but.
Yeah, I think it, we can find it either in the parks budget or the recreation budget. I mean, we're only talking a few hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And people will pay for a plot, right?
Right, that, that's the other thing too, is that we've got to decide whether we're going to set this up as an, as like an enterprise account where, people would pay for the plot and then we would use that funding to reimburse the expense. You know, of, of preparing the, uh, the land, uh, for the season and, and potentially buying a fence. That may be what we decide to do. Um, I haven't asked Megan and I think she's still on the call. She certainly could weigh in on that, but that would be something that we could look at too, is just creating an enterprise fund, which essentially is, is paying for itself. You know, the project would pay for itself, hopefully.
Yeah, that's what I'm. And I understand that, you know, we do have the, uh, farm, you know, the garden plots over at Erickson Fields, but there's much more community interest in garden plots than they can satisfy. So I think there is quite an interest in town.
I agree. I mean, I think it's a, it's a great option. I just want to make sure we have, and it sounds like we do, we have the funding to support it. Cause I think you're right. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good opportunity. I know it's been very well received with Erickson. And it's a good way to get people out and eating healthy, homegrown food.
Yes.
Well, and we, and we have been, and they have been, the Parks and Beautification people have been trying to find things that we can do on the west side of Route One, uh, so that we can say that we're, we're trying to do things in West Rockport, even though that's, you know, sort of halfway between, but, uh, it is a good idea and, and hopefully it will, uh, pan out.
Yeah, so, you know, they're, they're recommending twenty-five dollars for a rental fee, if you will, for each plot. So, I mean, even if we only had, you know, even if there was twenty of them that were rented, you know, at twenty-five dollars a piece, that's five hundred dollars, and that certainly would pay for the rotor tilling of the, of the, um, to prep, to prep it for gardens. And that would be an annual cost so that it could actually create some income to be able to support the project. So whether we decide that, you know, we put up a fence once we have the income, um, to do that, um, certainly would make sense as well, so that it's not necessarily coming out of any expense account.
Yeah, and also I think once you see what the interest is, I mean, you know, it's great, and I would like to think we would, you know, sell out, but, you know, get it, get it up and running. If we, if you end up having one or five, not that you would, but, you know, wait, wait until we see what the interest is before we put the expense in for a fence would be my recommendation.
Yeah, no, I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
So I did have this on a discussion item simply because, you know, it's a, it's a new concept that was brought up by the Parks and Beautification Committee. So the board certainly could, could act on this. Um, if you support it and you could simply have a motion that you, that you approve of the use at Marge Jones Fields for this activity with the details to be worked out by staff or something along those lines. When, and maybe set a price though for those plots at twenty-five dollars, um, or we could come back with, you know, the, the full details up, up to the board on that.
I think we could do it now. You know, I, I would make a motion in favor of, um, supporting Parks and Beautification development of the area at Marge Jones Field for a community garden, uh, with the plots to be sold at twenty-five dollars a piece. Uh, the town to, would we set two hundred dollars is what we'd spend on it to get it up and running?
Well, I, I don't have a definite estimate. I mean, they've got an estimate in there, but.
Details to be worked out by the staff?
Yeah, as long as it doesn't exceed five hundred dollars.
Yeah. Yeah.
Let, let staff work that out.
Is that your motion? To be worked out by the staff, uh,
By the staff, not to exceed five hundred dollars.
Thank you. Okay, everybody clear on the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yep. Uh, my question is, if conflicts of interests percolate for whatever reason between playing ball and growing things and garden plots, how does that get resolved?
I think we'd probably have to have pistols at dawn. No, I mean, I think I'm, I'm going to communicate with, um, with Five Town, Five Town, um, literally really uses the other field, so it's more the Babe Ruth, um, folks. So I know that I've received a proposal for them to locate a batting cage somewhere near that Babe Ruth Field, um, a second batting cage. So, I mean, everybody has to, has to get along, if you will, and, and work together, but I think we'll, I think we can manage that easy enough. Everybody's in support of the, of, of recreation and using the space, so, we would just have to, to manage that. And who knows, ha- you know, I, as, as it says in the proposal from Parks and Beautification, may, it may flop in the first year and, and we just let grass grow back there. It may take off and then we'll have a bigger problem that we'll have to deal with and try to find another location.
Jeff, are you looking for something, you know, recorded in the minutes or something saying that? Okay.
Well, I, I mean, my second question is, is there anything in any of the historical documentation around that field that provides guidance and use regard, you know, regarding use? That li- or that limits activity or use? For example, is it to only be used as a ball field? Is it to those types of things?
No, not that I've seen.
Okay.
Cause there are, you know, there's lots of different activities out there now. There are horseshoe pits that are out there that I don't think many people use that are behind the, um, first base side of the Babe Ruth Field. There's lots of other activities that go on there. Um, and I, you know, I can say from a, from somebody who's coached baseball games on that diamond and who's umpired games on that diamond, it seems like it's an underutilized space, cause it's just green space at this point. I think at some point there probably was either volleyball or badminton net that was put up on two four-by-four posts there, but that's, the posts are there, but the nets long gone. So I think it's, it looks like it's been, there have been other activities that have tried, been tried there in the past, and certainly I don't know the whole history there. It just hasn't, hasn't worked out, I think.
Anything else? All right, we have a first and a second. Um, roll call. Jeff?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. The, uh, the last item, which is a discussion item on the agenda, is the proposed harbor parking lot and parking study proposal. We had a parking committee meeting just, uh, this afternoon and Bill will report on all of that.
Yes, so, um, I'll try to keep this somewhat brief, but we, we had, um, Bill Lane from Gartland Dorsey Engineering had submitted his, uh, design to Mike Young and I for the, uh, proposed parking lot on the, I'm going to call it the Harbor Hillside, so we don't can, get confused with the Marine Park. And you, I did include the, uh, that design in your materials, which I know is very difficult to see in, in small, small-sized paper. Mike Young then, um, we, we had some concerns about the design that, uh, Bill put together, mainly around the entrance of the, uh, proposed parking lot where it is currently where the pump station entrance is because of the proximity with the, uh, the bridge, um, and, and whether we had sight distance or not. We do have sight distance as it stands, but that doesn't necessarily mean it's a, a great, uh, location with it as it's currently stands. So, uh, Bill did go back, Bill Lane did go back and make some adjustments to the plan to kind of shift that entrance a little bit. Um, does make it a little difficult with the Pascal Avenue Bridge right there. But he did make some changes there. We also looked at the, uh, parking spaces that are on, uh, off Main Street uh, by the corner of Main and Central that are, are drive-in or back-in spaces. There's about, I think, six spaces there. For those of you that, any of the, you that may have used those, you might know that they're pretty dangerous when you're either backing out of a spot or trying to get into a spot. So we've looked at that as well. There's a guard rail up there that we looked at, uh, potentially moving and maybe having angled parking up there versus the, uh, straight-in parking. Um, and that actually works pretty well, we think, um, by, by relocating a guard rail and having angled parking so that when people are leaving those spaces, they'd be backing into one lane of traffic instead of crossing over, uh, into a couple lanes of traffic. The other benefit of having angled spaces there is that, uh, people would have to enter them from Main Street and not be able to come down Central Street and try to enter those. It wouldn't, it would be very difficult for them to do that. So they wouldn't be crossing those lanes of traffic in that kind of blind, blind corner to go into those spaces. Uh, so that would be helpful as well. In looking at the, excuse me. In looking at the parking lot, the proposed lot, um, the Parking Task Force has talked about, number one, how to pay for the project. And that led us to discussion around possible paid a park, uh, or paid parking, um, within that parking lot. So it would be a metered, um, parking lot, and it could be determined how, you know, how many, whether it's two-hour parking, whether it's four-hour parking, whether it's all-day parking, you know, who knows at this point, um, but to raise money to help pay for itself. And so that led to a discussion about, well, if, if that was used, if that was a, a paid parking lot, it would make sense, we, we would almost have to have meters on the other streets instead of having free parking on the other streets. Because people wouldn't use the parking lot to pay if they could park for free on streets. So we've been having this whole discussion over the last several months around, um, potential, uh, paid parking. So I had, uh, been in contact with a parking consultant um, that looks that, uh, that, that does parking studies throughout New England. Uh, and he's, uh, he will be doing one from my understanding in Camden coming up as well, because they're also potentially looking at, uh, having meters or paid parking. I had expected a proposal last week and was going to forward that to the board, uh, after discussing with him last week and even, uh, even a little bit over the weekend. He doesn't think that a full-blown parking study is necessary because we don't have a huge number of, of spaces that we're looking at. Uh, he does certainly suggest a, a phased-in approach for any paid parking. The Parking Task Force today in talking around, around this topic, uh, we did have the parking consultant, uh, in the meeting with us. And the suggestion is that, uh, probably in July, we would do a, I guess I'd call it a mini-count, um, or review of, uh, the spaces and, and how they're being used and what the turnover rate is on, say, Central Street, Main Street, potentially Union Street. Uh, and he's looking at the, the number of usages like eighty-five, eighty-five to ninety percent. If those spaces are eighty-five to ninety percent, um, filled, then in the industry apparently, that's basically the indicator that says you need to have meters so you can turn those spaces over. So the Parking Task Force basically, um, decided today that, um, it would make sense for us to begin having discussions with, uh, business owners, uh, residents that, that are on, uh, Central Street, Main Street, and, and ask some questions of them. Um, you know, find out where do they park as business owners, where their employees park? Do they feel like that their customers, uh, can't find parking in front of their restaurants or their galleries or whatnot? Um, you know, during a normal, a normal busy, uh, summer. And get information from them, and then we'll move forward with a, the, um, survey of the parking, uh, in July. And then get that data and then go back to those same stakeholders and, um, provide that data and, and have further discussions. So there's a lot going on. There's a lot in the mix, uh, that's happening at this point. Uh, we've also talked about, uh, putting paid parking down at the Marine Park, uh, parking areas. Because we obviously, that's obviously used quite a bit during the summer months. And any of this, I should have said too at the beginning, any of the parking, uh, paid parking, we would do it as a, as a seasonal parking so that it wouldn't affect, most of the year. It would be maybe, you know, Memorial Day to Labor Day or May fifteenth to September fifteenth, or something like that, so that, we're, we're gaining the revenue hopefully from the tourists that come into Rockport, uh, or visitors that come into Rockport and not necessarily residents. And, you know, around that, we could have resident permit parking in certain areas if that's, you know, something that comes out of our discussions with the stakeholders, or we could have employee permit parking, um, so that we don't have a burden on, you know, the business owners or the, or the employees. Deborah, do you want to?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to clarify two things as part of the Parking Committee. Um, one is that, um, I, I, we were a little bit surprised by, um, the Parking Consultant's, um, response that, um, it's sort of reset our, our thinking a little bit. As, as Bill mentioned, we thought that if we had metered parking to he- to help pay for the harbor parking lot or the, um, what did you call it? Hillside parking lot, that it would drive more, um, parking, you know, to the free spots on Central and Main. Um, the consultant basically, you know, s- disabused us of that and said that that's not necessarily the case. Tourists coming to town see the, you know, P for parking and they're going to go to the parking lot. Um, that we don't necessarily have to feel that we have to have meter parking along Central and Main in order to have the meter parking in the hillside parking lot. So that was, um, interesting feedback to the committee today. The second thing is, is that when we are talking, Bill is talking about this feedback from stakeholders that the committee uh, wanted to get. That's sort of a, a separate part from the hillside parking lot question. Uh, I don't want the board to I don't want the board to get the feeling that we have to do all those things and consider all those things before the board is in a position to move forward or not with the hillside parking. That really is limited to the issues of do we, do we do metered parking on Central and Main? Separate from the hillside parking lot and the consideration by the board of that. Mark.
You know, something I think that, that goes, doesn't get mentioned enough, the streets that we're predominantly seeing our parking on are, you know, your Union Street down to Central, down through Main Street. And that's where, what businesses we have are, are there. But it is a state aid road and I think, and I've talked to Bill about it, but the road, I mean, if you look at the way the state has it lined now, and, and Bill, you may know more about this than me, but I believe the way it's lined now indicates the proper travel length width with the white lines on the edge from the yellow line in the middle. So if you go from that white line to the curb and you can't fit your car in there because it's not wide enough, you know, there's some responsibility on our part for the public to be able to provide a safe parking spot. So it may sound outlandish that we're talking about adding a parking lot, but, you know, should someone come in, namely the state and say, this isn't safe, you can't do it anymore, then we'd be scrambling even further. And, you know, if you, if you were to take the parking and add it as being viewed tonight down behind the, the wastewater building, and you take the other parking that happens up Union Street towards Graffums, down through to the Opera House and down towards the bridge, you know, you might be able to eliminate one side of the road in order to make a proper, safe parking space with on the other side. I mean, we have to look at opportunities and it may sound outlandish, but, you know, we have to be proactive in this area, I think. Just my two cents.
I'm sorry, before anybody else gives their two cents, there's one other thing that I, I think, Bill, that we should update the board on. And Mark reminded me of that. And that is that maybe without going into the identification of the individual pieces of property, but the Parking Committee has done a great deal of work in looking at other parking options that are within walking distance and some that are even a little bit outside, you know, the, the what, half, half mile is it, Bill? And
Quarter mile.
Quarter mile, I'm sorry. And really what it boils down to is but for one potential area, there really isn't a, a possibility. People are not interested, you know, homeowners have been, property owners have been contacted. They're not interested in selling to the town. They have plans for the property, et cetera, et cetera. So it's, it, it, it really has narrowed down our options a great deal. And this, of course, is property that we, as a town, already own. Sorry. Any other questions, comments?
No, I think it's important that you brought that up, Deborah, because we, we do, I mean, there is one property that we've, that has potential for an additional parking lot. So, you know, we'll continue to look at that. But Mark, you do make some good points about the, the fog lines being marked on Central Street by the state. And that does eliminate some legal spaces, particularly up by the, by the Opera House. Those spaces kind of have shrunk, if you will, because now it does have the, the proper travel way. And there's some other areas that we've looked at too on, on Union Street across from the, before, if you're coming down Union Street towards Central, before you get to the corner, we've noticed, I mean, obviously people have parked there anytime that there have been events at the Opera House or down in the Village area and not done so legally because there's not enough space there. But we've also, Mike Young and I have identified that we could potentially put three or four legal parking spaces in there by claiming our right of way, if you will, and removing a, an old utility pole that is not, doesn't even have any wires attached to it any longer. And doing some, some little bit of work there. So we, you know, we're looking at all of those options and, you know, if we, if we, some of those spaces on Central Street, on, on one side of the road, on the hillside of the road are, are not real, are, are not real good spaces for anybody to park, be parking in there. They're in the, in the drainage ditch if you're parking there. So I think your point is well made that we need to look at all of our options and our opportunities to, to make sure we have safe, legal parking spaces for any of the visitors that are coming to the Village area. And we have to identify one or two ADA accessible spaces that we don't currently have down in the Village area. So, you know, we'll have to be looking at all of that.
Well, we have heard some comments by some that, oh, we don't need parking. That just doesn't ring true. When you harken back to all the comments, public comments that were made during the whole library issue of whether we were gonna have seven or fourteen parking spaces. I mean, that was a big, huge issue a couple of years ago. And so, you know, we're responding to that. I, I, it was after that, it was what, it, it rose out of that, that this Parking Committee would
Deborah, if I could, I'll add, in addition, we just went through a budgeting process and we pointed out some significant concern regarding the Opera House and revenue stream. And Opera House events, if they were big and full, et cetera, would need additional parking that this lot would provide.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to note, because of the discussion with the potential hotel development in the Village area, that this parking, this proposed hillside parking lot was being thought of before the hotel was being, thought about being developed. I mean, this was not a response to that. And, and we can, if we had this, if, if we had the lot metered, you know, it wouldn't be used by hotel guests necessarily. We could, we could limit it so that it's two hour parking, whatever it is. You know, it's not designed for the hotel's use. It's designed for people that are visiting the Village, that are visiting the harbor. You know, it, the location is really perfect, especially with the walking trail that goes down to the harbor and then back up to Central and Main Street. It's a perfect location for that and it's an underutilized area. I mean, it's, right now, it's a maintenance nightmare. I mean, we're always, we're always trying to clean that up and make it look better and it's just not an easy thing to do because of the hillside that's there. I think it, I mean, it's a great use. Mike Young, before I came on board, he had mentioned it several times to different people about, hey, wouldn't this be a great, a great place to put a parking area? When I heard him say that, I was, just went and looked at it and I went, yeah, that would be a great place to put a parking area. And if we can get twenty eight spots there, that's, that's substantial and the revenue that could be generated would, you know, we don't have, we don't have that information at this point, but that's something the Parking Consultant can help us, help us look at with national averages for turnover and, and that sort of thing. And, and rates, you know, per hour or per two hours or whatever it is. And some of these, the technology now with paid parking is such that, you know, you don't have a meter at each individual spot. You, you have a kiosk and you pay with your credit card, pay with your smartphone. You know, if you need more time and you're down at the, at the harbor enjoying the views or whatnot and your time is running out, it'll alert you on your smartphone. And you can pay for more time. You know, it's just, it's very convenient. Bar Harbor numbers, you know, obviously different community than we are, but their numbers were outstanding. I mean, they, they paid for their system twice in one summer. And then from then on, it's, it's simply
Revenue.
Yeah. And the, the nice, well, I won't say the nice thing, but anybody that, that, one thing we've learned during this whole process is that revenue that's generated by parking has to go towards infrastructure. It doesn't go towards the general fund of a community. So it would go towards maybe more sidewalks or a, a, another parking area or, you know, things like that. So it's not, it's, it's very limited in state statute what you can use parking revenue for.
Other comments, questions?
Yeah, really, what's the next step?
Well, yeah, so Mike Young and I will look at the, at the proposed hillside parking plans again. And I expect that that'll come to the board for presentation by Bill Lane, probably in April, probably the second meeting in April. And then we can talk about next steps with that from there. And then in the meantime, the Parking Task Force is working on creating some, a couple of different things, some, some points to talk to stakeholders about, to ask them questions about, you know, their parking and that sort of stuff. And then also putting together a list of those stakeholders so that we're not missing anybody. Because it's important that we hit both sides of the street, anybody that has frontage, whether they're property owners or, or potential renters, you know, in those buildings, so we can hear from them as to what their thoughts and opinions are about parking in general.
I'm assuming, Bill, that along the same lines, you, the, there's gonna be an exploration for grant monies or, or things that the municipal costs?
Always.
As well as potential issuance of revenue bonds based on the anticipated revenue that the, that the meter parking would bring in for the parking lot itself, right, Bill?
Yes, correct.
Anything else? Okay, I think we've exhausted that topic for now. And we are on to Select Board Liaison Reports. Who wants to go first?
Don't everybody up at once? So, yeah, Jeff, why don't you go do it so you can get back to your, whatever you're doing?
Thank you. The Comp Plan Committee continues to meet every two weeks, very busy. We haven't, we had much of an update since our last Select Board meeting from, just from a timing standpoint. We did review the work that this Select Board, I'm sorry, the prior Select Board, prior, prior Select Board did in two thousand and eighteen with that group. So that is done. They are all brought up to speed on Select Board input and other committee member input. The Harbor Committee met recently. I did share with the Harbor Committee the concerns that I heard in the last budget meeting. And also that we had here was in around revenue and revenue generation in the harbor. So just so that they were not caught blindsided by comments on the street or from any of those committee members. And Pathways continues to meet and that's all I've got.
So
Mark.
Conservation meeting, I tried to sign in two different times last week. And I had a great deal of difficulty. It kept telling me that there was another meeting in progress. So anyway, I didn't get to that one. The Parks Meeting, I think Denise had already touched on some of the stuff, but the majority of the, the conversation was surrounding the plantings in a, around the Lime Rock Street side of the library. You know, what can, what can they do to sort of hide the meter box that sticks out like a sore thumb? You know, there was, oh, they were talking about plants, Buck Down and Plants Unlimited was receptive to helping us out because of the bulk that he can buy and the prices that are better than others. Just a little plant reconfiguration that was done by, I think, Leanne and Anna. And you talked about the, the garden over Marge Jones. And I, and I do think that's a, you know, it's, it's a, it's a little something. You know, and I think people do enjoy getting out and growing their own things. And hopefully we can foster this along to become something, you know, more than what we're starting with, so. Denise, I've got other notes, but not, oh, they were talking about the Kramer Park and how it was being cut back for better access. In my notes, sorry Denise, but there was some issue raised about them not being notified about cutting or cleaning up that was going to be taking place. And the step, and the steps going down to the water on the other side of the road, on the shore side of the bridge, the ones that we're always repairing. There was a thought, and I believe that was conveyed by Hanani to Bill, that that should be just eliminated because we have, we have a, a nice set of steps going down on the other side of the, the road.
Although she changed her mind after the meeting, Mark, she, one resident's complaint and then she went to check it out herself and she's like, these are fine. Never mind.
They are, I mean, there's, but there's a, I, I mean, over the years, I know that there's been a great deal of maintenance that has been required because of the, the rose bushes that come out and sort of engulf it, you know, on one side and, you know, whatever. I mean,
Well, I think that will become more important because the Kramer Park becomes a big parking lot. The natural way for people to get from there down to the harbor is on that path.
Yeah. But that's, that's Go ahead, sorry, Bill.
Sorry, Mark, I just wanted to weigh in on the steps. I mean, they, they just have to have maintenance every spring. I mean, that, you know, the water that runs down those, you know, from the, from the melting snow and the ice and the different events, they just need to have maintenance on an ongoing basis when it comes to that. And we just haven't, obviously, we haven't done it in the spring yet because we're just getting to those projects now. And the Kramer Park issue, I don't want to offend anybody, but I just want to remind people that Parks and Communication is an advisory committee. And, and the maintenance of that park has just been, it, it hasn't, there hasn't been a lot of attention paid to that park in a long time. And so, you know, we went in there to, to do some trimming and really to make it more welcoming. And they're doing, we're doing the same thing down at Glen Cove Park now with trimming up some trees and removing some of the old kiosks over the old picnic tables on the further end, trying to make it more open and welcoming. And I will say that we found there's a huge infestate, infestation of brown tailed moths down at Glen Cove. And so we've arranged for a contractor to come in and trim those nests out. But you know, that's the type of thing I'm not gonna go to Parks and Communication and ask permission for. We're just gonna do it because it's maintenance and it needs to be done. You know, we didn't look at
Yeah, no, and, and I, and I get that, Bill. I mean, you and I talked, I mean, after, you know, after the meeting the other night, I went in, you know, for a dual purpose and walked around the Marge Jones Field just to look at the fencing and, and the condition of things. And that falls back to, you know, that's a contractual thing that we need to write it a little bit better or ensure that it is followed better as far as the, the maintenance of that field, the mowing, the weed whacking. You know, because I found it, you know, quite interesting that we're talking about needing two hundred thousand for that, for that field, you know, for repairs. And, you know, what little bit I saw and I, there again, you know, I'm not a fence guy. I know shingles and I know stain. But it all boiled down to us not taking care of what we have. And that goes back into what you're doing now, Bill, and talking about as far as it not having been taken care of. There's a lot of that around town. And
There is a lot of, there's a lot of catch up and that's what we're trying to do is, you know, we're trying to do maintenance on an annual basis. And it's gonna take a while to get, to get caught up to, we're trying.
So, so the long, to finish that statement about the Marge Jones Field, I mean, I looked at the size of the plot. I thought it was gonna be tight. You confirmed it. But with regards to the rest of the property and the fencing and the dugout shingles on the roof and the stain, you know, there again, I'm not a fence guy, don't plan to play one. But we've got, after this budget is passed, we'll have fifty some odd thousand in reserve. And I don't have much of a doubt in my mind that uh probably thirty could, could fix everything that needs to be fixed out there, even if it went to forty. But that's going to extend our life expectancy of the field and the fences and the buildings out at least another five or ten years. Uh so, so to say that we're going to, we need two hundred thousand, well, that's great, but well, if we do maintenance now, we're not going to need that two hundred thousand. We just do fifty every five years. So, all right, I'm done. Thanks.
Okay, Michelle?
Yes, I'll go. Um so Jeff already covered the comprehensive plan. It was a great uh meeting and appreciate him walking us through all of that feedback. Planning Board meets this Thursday. Investment Committee met, um I think it was last week or the fifteenth. They've narrowed down their um requests uh down to four, I think, and they are meeting again on Wednesday to go through those, and we have not met on West Rockport Fire Station. So that is what I have for now.
Okay, um let's see, Legacy Rockport, lots of good stuff happening. You know, they've been working with Bill and understanding what's going on with the lime kilns, so there can be good um sort of good purpose for the town. The Stonemasons report is done and um we've got money in the budget, so that's all, that's all good for the lime kilns. The locomotive, which is um needing, needing repair and uh renovation, and we've got uh Taylor Allen at Rockport Marine is willing to help on that, and we've got a gentleman in town who's willing to work on that project. And Mercianus has stepped forward um to, to really sort of oversee that project because that's really how Legacy Rockport works, is each of the members takes on a project that they care about and um finds resources. So lots of good stuff happening there. Uh Opera House met, a lot of work on the uh website as well as working with Drew on. He is getting all these calls, but to try to figure out how to answer all the questions, which of course it's great to get the calls, but you know, we're not taking any deposits, we're not locking anyone in because we don't really know when we can have people in the Opera House. So that'll be that, that's just going to be something we're going to keep an eye on and monitor, and I know Bill's all over it, so. Good stuff, but meanwhile, we'll take advantage of the time to get the website for the Opera House, sort of in a good marketing good marketing language, so we can um get more people when we can let them come to the Opera House. And Deborah, economic development, I, I don't have my notes with me. Great meeting, but.
Yeah, yeah, they had a very good meeting um since we all last met and um what, they have a shared document in which they were trying to prioritize um the goals of the uh, of the group or the, or the tasks that the group wants to um address, I guess, more appropriately. And um and, and members of the group um add to that shared document, expand on it, and it's a good iterative process. We went through some of it last time and of course ran out of time, and so at our next meeting, we'll uh continue to do that. But it's a, it's a really good, creative, um you know, um thoughtful group, as I've mentioned before. So we're progressing. Um RES, uh the uh, y- y- you know that you approved that letter of intent or exactly what we're calling an invitation for a letter of intent or whatever. I know I don't have that right. Um in any event, you all approved it at the last meeting, inviting developers to contact us. And um some of the people on RES have sent that out, uh reached out to developers to um to contact us and have discussions with us. So that process is underway. Midcoast Solid Waste, we haven't reported on for a long time, and we're still not reporting on it because it's just going so smoothly. Our general ma, our manager there that we had hired, Mark Martunis, as I've reported before, is really fantastic and things have gone so well and um policy decisions really have not had to be made that we really haven't met for, um for a couple of months. And uh because Bob Falciani, who chairs the board, thankfully takes the position that if we don't have policy issues that really need to be discussed or decided, that the board doesn't have to meet. And that's where we're at. So um and then, last but not least, the uh Midcoast Internet Coalition has been incredibly active, and I think that's all I ever do anymore. And uh we have about ten towns that um are interested in participating in the coalition now. Now, uh we're officially still eight towns, but I think um, I think there's uh ten, maybe eleven. I mean, at some point, we have to make, you know, obviously, financial decisions have to be made with respect to the feasibility of all that. We're just not at that point yet. Having said that, uh you know, the board approved at the last meeting the guiding principles for the group, this board did, as have several other boards now. And the rest of the boards have the guiding principles on their agendas for either this week or their next meeting in April. One of the things that uh we want to um give you a heads up on for our next meeting is probably that we're going to bring back um an intergovernmental agreement um for you to take a look at uh at our next meeting that we're going to want to probably put on the uh June ballot. So it would just be a warrant article that would, uh we obviously have to do this quickly. There would be for Camden and Rockport to establish that interlocal, or to be able to establish the, you know, the regional utility entity that was a part of those guiding principles. Um there's clearly not enough time to go to all the participating towns and get it on their June ballot. But if Camden and Rockport were to proceed, then it would be able, it would put us in a position as a coalition to be able to apply for and receive grants and other monies that um now, as opposed to waiting till November. So.
I think the plans have been to wait till November for the interlocal agreement, but with the new um ARP, the um American Relief Act.
American Rescue Act Plan.
Rescue, yeah, a, anyway, there's a lot of money that's coming to the state of Maine. And there could be grants available to this regional utility, but without an entity to apply for those grants, we lose out. So we've got to just make sure we're in a place right away. And that's the urgency to try to get something on the June ballot for this, and it should not be controversial. I mean, this is a, an opportunity to bring high-speed broadband internet service to, to the midcoast region uh and have it be on our terms, not the um, the big monopolies.
Okay. Anything else, questions?
I just, no, I just had a couple of things. I, you know, thanks to you uh twenty percenters there that I'm with. Uh certainly Megan and Bill for the budget. I mean, it went uh, you know, difficult decisions were made. We did some good stuff last year with the bond. We've added to that this year and um I think it was rather well done without any bloodshed. And the other thing, um I would like, oh yeah, the Budget Committee too, don't we not forget them? When potentially, Bill, do you see us in your crystal ball meeting in public again? May, maybe?
Yeah, I, I continue to, to watch it, obviously, you know, as Denise said with the Opera House, it's the same thing. And I've had staff members come to me and ask about committee meetings and the like as to when we can expect, and I said, my guidance to committee meetings is, is as of in April, we're going to continue meeting by Zoom with committees, just because I think that's too soon. But with the vaccinations continuing to ramp up and the like, you know, it's really up to the select board, but you know, maybe it's May, um maybe it's June. I think we just kind of have to play it by ear and see, and see what happens.
A, a question on that, Bill. Um doesn't um isn't um just about all of the restrictions on uh getting together, um doesn't that sort of evaporate by the end of May? Per the governor?
I think it's the beginning of May, actually, when they start.
There were some in May, beginning of May, and I think by Memorial Day, it's completely open. Is that right?
Yeah, I think so, which is why I'm, you know, I guess I would lean more towards June, and we could actually go to actual in-person meetings and not have to worry about any Zoom or any, you know, hybrid type meeting. Uh which, you know, we still have to social distance and the like probably when we get to that point, but um that remains to be seen too. But even with social distancing, if we did it in the Opera House auditorium, you know, you, you can get plenty of people uh into the, into that, um into that room like board meeting.
There he is.
Jeff? Jeff trying to say something? No. Yep. Okay, Jeff, you there?
I am here. Yeah, I have nothing to say.
Oh, okay. Your picture popped up on the screen, which usually happens when you make a noise uh off of mute. So we thought that maybe you were trying to say something or otherwise, make a noise. Okay.
No, my, my apologies. If I go to full-on picture and video, my signal disappears.
Understand, understand. Okay, any, uh Mark, were you done with your comments, or did you have more?
Oh yeah, no, no, no. I just wanted to make sure, you know, I appreciate the effort everybody did, so thank you all.
Yep.
Yeah, it's been a um very um pleasant budget experiences here.
That's, that's two in a row, keep that in mind.
Yeah.
That's true. I guess you're taking a break for that, right? Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else.
I move, we adjourn.
I'll second that. Any, everyone will second that.
A unanimous second.
Right. Uh, okay, discussion. All right, Jeff?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. All right, thanks, everybody. And um I think it's um three weeks before, it's three weeks until our next meeting, isn't it, Bill?
It is, we do have a, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so um but um but it'll be an important meeting, just to uh approve all our warrant articles and everything, right?
Yeah, and we'll really have to hit that broadband one, and that's going to be.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and we'll probably have to, by that time, have a broadband, a presentation, you know, full presentation of where we're at and broadband on the agenda, I think. Okay, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Nice to see you.
Thanks.
Thanks, bye.